And direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray you to bless and protect all the people of our city and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of honor and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of the meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person with the car- Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes. Pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty-eight subsection twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We'll begin with the reading and approval of the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes, and October seventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion, Councilor General Lawitz?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tisoni, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings. At this time, I'm going to take out of order item number one-one-four-four-seven. It's on page three of our council agenda under Appointments Committee. Item one-one-four-four-seven, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Mohica to the position of police officer permanent. Report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met earlier this evening with the mayor, Chief McAvine, and the appointee. Uh, the mayor-in-chief reported that Officer Mohica has nearly completed his field training, uh, that the field training officer reported favorably of great performance, and the mayor reported that Officer Mohica will be a great asset to the force. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the co- uh, the c- to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor He- Counselor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in the officer who has been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. And have you raised your hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Robert Mohica.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That it were fair truth.
That it were fair truth.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
Congratulations. Communications from the mater- from the mayor, orders, item one-one-four-seven, I'm sorry, item one-one-four-five-zero, an order appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings surplus to sewer leachate pump station improvements. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Madam President. The transfer of the eight hundred thousand is from the available sewer retaining earnings for improvements to the sewer leachate pump station. The improvements are needed to perform necessary repairs to handle the flow from the sludge landfill to the sanitary landfill on West Street. The project is currently up to bids for construction to start- start in late spring. The Finance Committee was in favor and I make a motion to move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? This item and the next item require a roll call vote and two-thirds vote, which is eight votes to pass. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one-one-four-five-one, an order appropriating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from water retained earnings surplus to water repairs to mains account. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Madam President. The orders of putting one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is from the available water surplus funds to create a valve exercising line item to make improvements to the city water- city's water system. This is to implement a valve exercising program. The Water Department will be testing the city's one thousand water valves to properly repair and replace them in a timely manner to ensure the proper water flow. This is a multi-year project, and this is only the first phase. That in this amount will not cover the complete cost, but it is a much-needed maintenance project to prevent breakage in the fu- future as we have some water valves that are well over a hundred years old that need attention, and this is a proactive approach, uh, to prevent future breakage issues. The commi- Finance Committee was in favor and I make a motion to move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Communications. Item one-one-four-five-five, notice of appointment of Vincent Puceteri to the position of city solicitor for term expiring January seventh, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place this communication on file and let a letter be sent to Attorney Flick to thank him for his many years of service to the City of Gardner as city solicitor.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to place the item on file and send a letter of thank you to Attorney John Flick for his years of service as city solicitor with the City of Gardner. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one-one-four-five-six, notice of appointment of Rachel J. Roberts to the position of executive secretary for term expiring January first, twenty twenty-six. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I thank the mayor for this letter and move to place this communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Heath to place the communication on- to place the notice on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, item one-one-four-five-two, application for motor vehicle dealers licenses class two, Gardner Five Star Auto Sales, four oh seven Chestnut Street. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Safety Committee just met on this item. Uh, it's a business, longstanding business in good standing with the city. Uh, therefore we unanimously in favor and I recommend and move to approve the application.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one-one-four-five-three, Fire Department update with Fire Chief Greg Legoy. Finance Committee, Counselor General Lawitz.
Make a motion to place the update on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tisoni to place the update on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Fire Chief Legoy had a presentation about the overtime budget at the Fire Department up to, uh, through the beginning of December. Uh, our packet contains those overtime expenditures, uh, by year back to twenty twenty for both the fire budget and the ambulance budget. While not in alignment with previous years, FY twenty twenty-five budget was, uh, formulated, uh, when it was believed it was going to be full staffing, uh, due to a number of, um, things that have happened, uh, resignations, military duty, uh, start times at the Fire Academy, uh, has resulted in a higher than anticipated amount in the vacation, um, budget, um, for the overtime. Um, this, the chief did say that line item, that line would be near zero if the Fire Department was fully staffed. Call volume is also up. We had the unusually dry fall season where, uh, we had initial, um, additional, uh, brush fires. He's, the chief said normally there are zero brush fires during that, um, that time of year. Reality of the situation is the Fire Department will be coming back to the council at some point to request free cash to supplement their overtime budget. Finance Committee was grateful, uh, to both the chief and the mayor for coming forward, keeping us informed, uh, so we can make educated, um, decisions going forward with the current free cash we have. And, um, I did get some, um, asked the chief for further information and the breakdown in those, leaving those line items was very similar to, to past years. So that was the update from, from the chief that I thought everyone should be, um, aware of in further detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one-one-four-five-four, report on the investigation of the Mackey Park project. At this time, I am calling on Counselor George Tyros to present the findings and recommendations from the report. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The key issues and events that were examined include the following. The design of the park changed from initial concept to bid award. The conceptual layout created by Ty and Bond and presented to the City Council in June of twenty twenty-two showed three terraces with individual ramp accesses to each level. The mayor's letter supporting the project cited, quote, "The terraces would correct grading issues, bring the slopes to a level that is compliant with ADA standards and allow us to utilize the area in a productive manner." However, in May of twenty twenty-three, the bid set drawings utilized during the public bidding process for the project clearly showed ramp entrances to the bottom and top terraces with stairs connecting each to the middle. The second key finding was that the Department of Community Development and Planning did not apply for or obtain a building permit for Mackey Park prior to its completion. This issue was confirmed by both the Building Commissioner and Director of Community Development and Planning. In the notice of violation by the Building Commissioner, he stated, quote, "Mackey Park does not meet the accessibility requirements as outlined in section nineteen of five twenty-nine CMR, Massachusetts Accessibility Code, as the middle tier of the park is not accessible to persons with disabilities." The errors around this project gave us an opportunity to make corrections to prevent this sort of thing from happening again. This was far from the largest project the city had going on and is actually on the smaller end of what we typically deal with. However, this review has generated necessary steps to improve internal policies, processes, and oversight for the benefit of local government efficiency. There are thirty departments that comprise the city's administration. Each needs to be able to stand on its own and have strong internal policies to act as guardrails. Because realistically, there's only so much the City Council can do on a day-to-day basis to view those guardrails. For example, in this case, the Building Commissioner, in a span of a few hours, was able to articulate the issues and violations with this project. The trouble is, the Building Commissioner wasn't brought into the project until complaints were made by the public after its completion. This happened in this order because despite there being a requirement to do so, the Department of Community Development and Planning did not apply for a building permit for this project. The director informed me that his department had never applied for a building permit for any project they had done of a similar scope. This appears to have been a longstanding practice in his department since before this administration. This approach to internal policies is what I see as the first domino. However, poor communication and clear directives are just as much to blame. This project was seemingly assigned, I'll be it loosely, to at least four different individuals in the Department of Community Planning through different times and through critical milestones. Compounded by the high turnover rate of staff in this department, every time there was a handoff made, sometimes of which were unclear, there were delays. Delays led to cost increases and the potential for things to be missed. For example, there were numerous examples of members of the department reaching out to members of other city departments for things like account numbers, engineering drawings, funding amounts, and even email addresses and contact information of the contractor who won the bid. All of this information should have been known, documented, and organized within the department's files. In another instance, the member of the department responsible for the project inquired with the engineering firm where Mackey Park site was located. Let that sink in. Nearly two years after the council appropriated funds for this project, the department was asking outside engineers for the specific location of the project, which is visible from this building. In general, it seemed like there was not a lot of policies or standard operating procedures guiding this project. I make these points to drive home that while I think the question I set out to answer is relatively simple, I also think that there's more that needs to be done in making sure the department is functioning properly because it is so important to our city objectives and because it is the conduit through which much state and federal funds throw- flow, and those funds have been and will continue to be essential for improvement. Furthermore, as the council has seen earlier this year through our review of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which this department administers, those issues are still not entirely corrected and didn't make an impact on this project. It should also not be the expectation that the mayor micromanage this project for this department. As I said already, every city department needs to be able to stand on its own, which is why, after the entirety of this review I've just undertaken, as well as my experiences as the council's representative on the CDBG Steering Committee for the past two years, I am offering some suggestions for us to consider that I help form a structure that will help enforce proper oversight without being overbearing and help to make sure the department can function. One last point before I go into my recommendations. Overall, I think this investigation went smoothly, but as you can probably tell by reading this report, there were varying levels of cooperation and resistance. But one point I want to make sure is clear, the mayor was very cooperative and stepped in where necessary to support my work. My first recommendation is the creation of an Economic Development Subcommittee. The council should consider establishing a new subcommittee to cover economic development. It would also allow the committee more focused attention on the topic and the department, enabling better and stronger council oversight. We've had success with this in the past with the creation of the Appointments Committee at the suggestion of President Kuziskas to clear the backlog of expired and vacant appointments and enable the council to adequately review and process nominees. I think it should be considered adding a non-voting representative with the Disability Commission to the committee for their added perspective. The second is progress reports. The council should stipulate as a condition when large appropriations like this are made that regular and thorough progress reports are made until the project or goal is accomplished. This should be done on a case-by-case basis and subject to varied circumstances that come before us. This would have been certainly, uh, sorry, this would have certainly enabled the council and the mayor to spot the issue with this project much earlier and I think in all likelihood would have saved the city money. It would also give us the opportunity to be proactive rather than reactive. The third is subcommittee oversight in general. Subcommittees should be more proactive in seeking reports from departments under their jurisdiction. Regular opportunities should be created for subcommittees to receive updates from departments, and subcommittees should be encouraged to provide oversight and feedback when necessary. I think we've seen this begin with Finance Committee and we should continue to see it. Finally, is a new ordinance proposal that earlier today I submitted to the city clerk, a proposal for the Finance Committee to review. That proposal is that this Community Development Block Grant Steering Committee shall meet monthly, and I would suggest for a period of eighteen months. I've tried working both the department and the mayor on informally implementing monthly meetings for greater focus and attention to the program after significant audit findings from the state showed significant mismanagement earlier this year. However, I believe a more formal approach to oversight may be needed in this case. This is an example of how we can provide objective oversight through targeted legislation. In closing, I would like to thank the council president for assigning me to this investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tyros. Is there a motion on the item? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I've completed my investigation and reported my findings for the purpose of further study and review. After discussion, I move to refer my report to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to refer the Mackey Project report to the Finance Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Safety Committee, item one-one-four-four-four, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses class one. A, Salvador Chevrolet four forty-two West Broadway. B, Salvador Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram four forty-two West Broadway. Report from the Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this business has been longstanding. It's in good standing with both the Police Department and the, uh, City Hall. Uh, therefore unanimously in favor and I, uh, recommend approval of the application.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to, uh, to, uh, approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one-one-four-four-five, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses class two. A, AC Auto Clinic four eleven Parker Street. B, Brian's Auto Sales, five forty-nine West Broadway. C, Blake Motors, four twelve Main Street. D, Gardner Auto Mart Incorporated, one eighty-two West Street. E, Gardner Motors LLC, one nineteen Pearson Boulevard. F, JPJ Automotive LLC, seventy-eight East Broadway. G, Mike's Auto, two fifty-one East Broadway. H, Osagi Enterprise LLC, forty-three Toby Street. I, Rick's Radiator Repair Used Car Sales, eight hundred West Broadway. J, Riverside Auto, sixty-five Riverside Road. K, Salvador Chevrolet four twenty-one West Broadway. L, Salv- Salvador Chevrolet, two forty-nine Tiffany Boulevard. M, Jaywood Incorporated, three sixty-one West Street. Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier?
Uh, yes, all in good standing and we unanimously move to approve these applications.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to approve the applications. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one-one-four-four-six, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses class three. A, Osagi Enterprise LLC, used auto parts sales, forty-three Toby Street. B, Riverside Auto, sixty-five Riverside Road. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, again, both are in good standing and we unanimously recommend approval.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to approve the applications. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Appointments Committee, we entertained item one-one-four-four-seven earlier this evening, taking it out of order at the beginning of the meeting. Committee of the whole, item one-one-two-eight-nine, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Part One, thereof, entitled Administrative Legislation. Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to send the ordinance to second and final printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to send the item to second and final printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And leading up to a motion, uh, my intention tonight is to propose three different motions that would lessen the possibility for mischief in city government. And by that I mean the ability of some future mayor using the flexibility in board of commission size or in temporary appointments to avoid having to go through city council to get the action they want. These provo- proposals provide guardrails for future mayoral action and protect city council prerogatives. The first motion would be an amendment to set the size of the various boards and commissions to a fixed number rather than to a range. A future mayor would not be able to stack a board by increasing its size and adding members aligned to their views. Conversely, a mayor would not be able to shrink a board by not filling seats in an effort to main control of that board. The fixed number in the first motion align with current board sizes with one exception, and that would be the Youth Commission. The ordinance currently authorizes a size of up to seven. Not knowing how many are currently serving or how active the commission is, I set the number to five. But if counselors prefer a different fixed number, I am opening to, open to adjusting the proposal. So my first motion is to amend item number one-one-two-eight-nine Administrative Legislation in order to set the size of the various boards and commissions to a fixed number as follows, and I won't read all the details, but I'll briefly go through them. The Board of Assessors to three assessors, Airport Commission, seven members, Board of Health, three members, Cemetery Commission, three members, Council on Aging, seven members, Disability Commission, seven members, Golf Commission, five members, Historical Commission, seven members, Municipal Grounds, six members, of which one shall be the Director of Public Works, Planning Board, five members, Youth Commission, five members. Thank you.
Motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to the City Council Rule Eight, I request a brief recess to review these newly offered amendments.
Pursuant to Rule Eight, the council will be granted the recess. We'll take a ten-minute recess for the council to review the motions for the public watching. Uh, these have been provided in writing to each member on their desk, and the recess will be to the sole purpose for each member of the council to read the motions. At the end of the ten-minute recess, uh, we will reconvene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will continue with discussion on the motion to amend. Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the council, and I appreciate the recess in time to put these over. I also appreciate, you know, my colleagues' work on these and the time and thought that went into them. On motion one, the ranges versus set numbers for committee and commissions and boards. You know, I spoke at our last meeting with, you know, the opposition that this doesn't necessarily fix, I think, the concern. Whereas even with set numbers in the current system, should a mayor be elected again and an appointment, or, you know, position be three years, they could simply let that spot become vacant and then fill those as they want and see fit. So I won't get too much into that again. However, I do think I want to note that, you know, one of my concerns, too, is at this stage in the game, where this has been before us for some time, we're with the finance committee for some time, and we're on our way to second and final printing potentially, is making substantial changes, you know, at this sort of late hour. I think where we had such time to consider this, it's something I would have liked to have maybe seen a while ago, had it, you know, come up with more time to think of it. And I worry about going beyond just technical changes at this point. Not that we don't have that ability to. However, in my opinion, that's what this sort of time is best reserved for, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And this would be a big, I think, change and adjustment. It's not a simple thing. Whether we have to accept this as it is, or if we end up debating board and commission by board and commission, what we want this to look like, to set some sort of standard that is agreed on by the whole council. So I worry that it's sort of a solution in search of a problem, that if it ever actually arises, I do think we have a strong and well-run appointments committee that can, I think, handle a lot of these things. And so on this motion, I will, I think, be respectfully opposing it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. Currently, at the appointments committee this evening, there were five commissions and boards that had designations. So I think by setting specific amounts, we're going to be limiting some of our commissions and boards by doing the work that they need to do, by setting set amounts. I will say that, and I looked it up during our recess, that the disability commission by state statute has to have five members by state law. And we have it at seven here, when they have to be staggered to one, two, and three-year terms, but no more than 13 is what it says on the state website. But currently, there are many vacancies on boards besides the five this evening. And as I said, we're not allowing people to do the business that they need. I think we're going to be, you know, putting ourselves in the corner. And if I recall, when I was part of the appointments committee, and the chair can correct me if I'm wrong, in January of this year, I believe we had over 60 vacancies and appointments that were brought to us. And that took a long time for those people to be vetted and voted on, and for the mayor to find qualified people and to bring them to the appointments committee and to be approved by the city council. It is a process. And I, as I said, other than, you know, three boards that I think are, you know, zoning board, planning, and conservation are the ones that probably should have a set amount and to make sure they have an appropriate forum to meet, the other ones, I don't think it's necessary to have a set number, other than the ones that are dictated by state law. So as written, I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion on the amended motion, the motion to amend. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I will also not be supporting this amendment for two reasons. The first is that this amendment would revert back to the status quo. And the status quo today is that the mayor can stack or shrink commissions and boards if he or she chooses, as the previous counselors have mentioned. The second is I support flexibility. I also, as an example, see an issue with three member boards and commissions lacking agency to have differing opinions and express them and debate them and serve the city in their best. So I like the flexibility boards and commissions have. I think this will be a good thing for the city, and I'll be supporting the legislation as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Generalaus?
Thank you, Madam President. This is something that, obviously, as on the finance committee, we have gone through this for some time, back to May, I think, whatever it was. And the range was something that had concerned me as well. I appreciate Calvin Brooks, Counselor Brooks, bringing this to us. But in fully thinking it through, nothing can completely stop any executive from tampering or tinkering with the commissions. And the reality is, it's the prerogative of the executive to set those boards and for the council to approve the nominees if we see so fit. I think the council, as mentioned, done a good job of creating the appointments committee with Counselor Tyros in overseeing the appointments. So there is a check there in place. The council needs to be attentive, and I'm not sure if adding more and more restrictions to it is going to make it any less likely some other executive takes nefarious action. So at this time, I also will not be in support of the motion, but I do appreciate the hard work that Counselor Brooks put into putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you, Counselor Brooks, for presenting this. Gave me a different way to look at it. I think his concern was more about the temporary appointments. Am I correct? Is that more of what you were concerned about? That's a question, but give me a second. I won't be supporting this. The reason why I won't be supporting the motion is because I do believe, well, the other counselors went ahead and they touched on it, so I won't go ahead and repeat what they said, but I strongly agree with what we already have put in front of us. But there's amendment here. I do like motion number two on there, as far as no temporary appointment shall succeed themselves as a temporary...
Which is on motion one right now.
Yes, I'm sorry. But, so, yeah, I won't be supporting this, all right? But I think it's, I just think his concern was more about temporary appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Any further discussion on motion to amend? Okay, I'm going to go ahead unless there's an objection and do a roll call vote on the motion to amend. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
No.
Counselor Generalaus?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Haglund?
No.
Counselor Heath?
No.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yes.
Counselor Tiago Minhos?
No.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Mr. President, can this go? No. Two yays, nine nos, the amended motion does not pass. Back to the original motion. Is there a discussion on the original motion? Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a second motion, as I believe counselors have noticed. The second motion is designed to prevent a person from receiving consecutive temporary appointments to the same position, thereby avoiding city council confirmation for an extended period. Temporary appointments are meant to get the city from here to there, not to be a long-term solution. So my motion is to amend item number 11289 Administrative Legislation, Section 30, Chapter 3, Personnel Appointments and Employment, Section 4, Temporary Appointments, by adding the following sentence to the end of the section: "No temporary appointee shall succeed themselves as a temporary appointee."
Thank you, counselor.
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Brooks, seconded by Counselor Tisoni, to amend the motion as is written. And we have that in front of us. Again, this will be part of the record of the meeting. It'll be in the minutes of the meeting, but as the counselor said, a motion to amend "No temporary appointee shall succeed themselves as a temporary appointee." Is there a discussion on the motion to amend, Counselor Brooks?
May I just add that that sentence is currently in the ordinance and was taken out of the revision that was presented to us?
Thank you.
And I just think it's an important concept. Temporary is meant to be temporary. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question that comes to me when I think about it, because, again, really inviting these changes and searching for flexibility and reviewing the legislation, counselor... Question for Counselor Brooks through the chair. The scenario that comes to my mind is this language would not make an impactful difference if, say, the mayor temporarily appointed the secretary or her secretary for a day and then reappointed the temporary appointment that previously was the temporary appointment. Now it's getting confusing to that appointment as a temporary appointment again. I only ask this question because as the chair for the appointments committee for the past two years, I have not seen this situation occur, where we've had a temporary appointment succeed themselves as a temporary appointee. And again, if there's a situation where an individual needs some flexibility, maybe some more time to decide if it works for their family and work-life balance to be able to serve the city oftentimes in a voluntary capacity, with not all these boards meeting monthly and sometimes ad hoc, they might not get a chance to attend a board or commission meeting in their time as a temporary appointee. So I look for flexibility in these changes, and that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, unless there's any objection, we'll do a roll call vote on this motion as well. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalaus?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Haglund?
No.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yes.
Counselor Tiago Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Mr. President, can this go? No. Five yays, six nos, the motion doesn't pass. Back to discussion on the original motion. Is there further discussion on the original motion? Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, and this is the third and last time. My third motion merely requires the mayor to advise city council of its temporary appointments. The mayor currently does advise city council of his appointments. This motion would codify current practice and prevent future mischief by a future mayor. I would also say it helps protect city council prerogatives. We, earlier this evening, on a different item, there was discussion about oversight by council on certain activities. And I think the only way council can have proper oversight is by knowing what's going on. And this is a way of just assuring that a future mayor will continue the practice of notifying us. So the motion is to amend item number 11289 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 30, Section 30, Chapter 3, Personnel Appointments and Employment, Section 4, Temporary Appointments, by adding the following sentence to the end of the section: "The mayor shall notify city council of any temporary appointments made under this section."
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Brooks, seconded by Counselor Tisoni, to amend item 11289, as he had said, and by adding "the mayor shall notify city council of any temporary appointments made under this section." Is there a discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Tyros?
I'd just like to provide my thoughts as the chair of the appointments committee that appointments are a public thing that the mayor does. They're not secret. Any appointment made, whether it be full or temporary, is sent to the clerk, who then by city charter notifies the city council. So again, I don't know, I think it was said earlier, if this is a solution in search of a problem, but it's, and I do believe in council oversight, this one just doesn't make as much sense to me in terms of its practice today. And I don't think it's a necessary change at this point in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Generalaus?
As Counselor Tyros said, the motion itself, the amendment here on its face, makes a ton of sense. We need to know the temporary appointments. However, we've established an appointments committee to take on the role of monitoring all the appointments. It's the job of the appointments committee to be aware of those temporary appointments who have been appointed. As stated by Counselor Tyros, the city clerk has those at her office and should be aware of those in part of their role. So I, the essence of this motion is already provided by the process we have in place, so I will not be in support.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Okay, we'll also, if there's no objection, we will do a roll call vote on this motion as well. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Generalaus?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Haglund?
No.
Counselor Heath?
No.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tisoni?
Yes.
Counselor Tiago Minhos?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Mr. President, can this go? No. Four yays, seven nos, the motion does not pass. Further discussion on the original motion? Counselor Brooks?
So I will be supporting this for second printing, given the way the council has chosen to follow. I would just ask that as we go forward, we keep our minds open to the possibility of what can happen, and if things happen, to be prepared to make, to shift our, our, decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros?
I just want to support those comments that I do believe this is something the council should take up more regularly. That way, it's not such a Herculean task when it does come up for review, and I support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? So the original motion was to send the item to second and final printing, made by Counselor Generalaus, seconded by Counselor Tyros. Any further discussion on the original motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no. Motion passed, please. There is no unfinished business that matters for reconsideration. There is no new business. Counsel comments and remarks? Are there any counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Tisoni?
Yes, I just want to take a minute to wish everybody out there safe and hap, and happy holiday season, and enjoy the time if you get time to spend with your family. Thank you.
Counselor Mack?
I also wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. And I want to take an opportunity at the end of the year to give a special thank you to all the city employees, including our first responders. You know, they work hard and they're very dedicated, and I don't think they get enough recognition for what they do. And I think it's important as the city council that we let them know how much they're very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? I mean, further counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a kind of a question for the city clerk there. Changed the way the names go now. It used to go Harden, Heath, Haglund. You threw me off today, didn't give me any warning. I was ready to say a couple times. I just want to, you know, let you know that I know. But I also had a question for the mayor, just slight question. Is Chipotle opening this week? I know I feel like I'm always asking about food.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Chipotle's opening day is this Friday.
Thank you, thank you. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion? I'm sorry, any further counsel comments and remarks? I'd also like to wish all of the city councilors, our city clerk, and all of the city employees, and all of our constituents and every citizen in the city, a very wonderful, happy, and healthy holiday season, and a very happy new year. We've had a great year on the council, and I just look forward to what we have coming in our second year of our term. With that, I will entertain a motion on the floor. So adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Counselor Tisoni, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no.
All my beloved citizens and all, as we adjourn, we take advantage of the opportunity of joint deliberation and action which is turned across this meeting. Bless us, oh Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people whose representatives we are, in due our turn to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.